Evening, everybody. Welcome to the Community Environment Services Committee meeting of 3rd of June. Any apologies for absence, Karen? Right, 5125 to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Any comments, additions, changes to the minutes? Happy to approve. Good.
Yeah, you just need to sign them on the back. And just initial each bottom page.
5225, any declarations of any disclosures concerning community interests? Under the car? Good. 5325, the town team manager's report. So we've received in the pack comprehensive report. I'm just going to ask the town team manager if there's anything he'd like to particularly bring to our attention.
Just mainly that, just to be aware, I see the team are working hard at the moment within the town centre open spaces ahead of Anglia in Bloom, Fettford in Bloom. So that's one of the priorities the team's currently working on at the moment. So all the hanging baskets for the plants, areas of being tidy, in readiness for our judges' visits. We've also been working closely with Breckland Council and Norfolk County Council to try and get them on board as well to understand that their obligation, Fettford is also required. And there's a lot of areas under their ownerships that we need their support with. And to date, they have been kind of working with us and showing some support, especially Breckland Council. Norfolk are still trying to work with us, but we're still yet to see some results. We're also currently still battling with the town's underpasses. The team have obviously been carrying out their cleaning on the underpass areas. And it's just to be aware again, we are trying to pressure Norfolk County Council as they are the site and asset owners that they have again, a responsibility and obligation to these assets. It's not with the town council. And they do need to maintain these assets that are placed here in Fettford under their ownerships. And then again, just the partnership working again, we're sort of working again with Breckland Enforcement to try and get some enforcement and action on particular areas, including the Barnham Common around the town with street drinking, antisocial behaviour. And we're also working with the police on that as well.
Thank you. Good work.
Yeah, thanks, Nick. Lovely report again. I'd just like to express my disappointment and frustration that plants were stolen from the market square overnight, I think it was. It's it's heart-bulking and I don't know what we do.
No.
We have got CCTV. We can just see what we do. I'm really upset about that. I want to sort of express that in my opening meeting. And also, thanks for the hard work we do for Anglia Bloom. I'm really positive about it this year. I think we've all got a bit of a role, haven't we?
Absolutely. It's really positive. The local business, Terry, you know, we've got a lot of support from the local businesses this year. You know, there's real drive with everybody wanting to see the town enhanced and improved. So I think, you know, you're right, we've got a real drive and opportunity here to re-showcase Fettford.
Yeah. And while we're here, it's still really part of the agenda, but I'd like to thank your team's excellent hard work on VE Day. Other people worked hard as well, but I think you might.
Thank you. I'll pass it on to the team. Thank you.
President.
Thank you. Just, I don't want to make this a negative thing, because there's a lot of stuff in there. The piece I notice is the amount of work that's gone into repairing damage. So whether that be vandalism, clearing up after travellers, planters, all that fine thing. And I just wonder how much of your time and his team's time is taken up on that? And whether we capture it or not, because this is an important part of reference back to the public saying we're doing all this work and actually it's costing us all.
Absolutely.
And I don't want to make that, you know, a one social media post and say, look how bad these particular people were, but we've got to capture it somewhere because of all the great work you're doing is getting scuppered by this.
Exactly, it's, yeah.
Well, I don't know if we've got a way of capturing it.
So I think, you know, I think you're right. We are trying to log incidents now as much as we can. We're also doing that with the police. So we're keeping a log incidents down of all the ASD, the drinking, antisocial behaviour. And we will be sort of bringing up with meetings going forward with the sergeant, the local sergeant for the area. She's willing to work with us and kind of try and combat those particular issues that we're experiencing. And yeah, I think, like I said, it's the only way forward is to keep highlighting, you know, some of the unfortunate issue that we do have to deal with alongside the good stuff.
Thank you.
Can I ask, who is asking for us to keep a log of the time or the money or both?
Well, I think it's really the cost to the council. And I think that staff time does cost.
It does.
And people sort of forget that. And some of the stuff that we're doing on that is, as you've said, quite clearly Breckland work.
Yes.
Yeah. You know, and some of those areas cross over, the Breckland, the antisocial behaviour stuff that we're mopping up is also part of there. So I think it's important we, you know, we understand how much we're doing, but also let the public know.
Just as an update on that, there is we have got the costs now for the clear-up of the travellers and it's very close to £5,000. So just that one incident costs the council £5,000.
I think we should have a toss-up.
We've only two same.
Not that, yeah, sorry, pounds size.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so just, just one thing on that, and I do agree with what we're saying there. My worry is if you highlight one particular incident and one particular group, then it does look like you're picking them out, when actually there's a bigger picture in the round. Now, we can say that clearing up after travellers costs £5,000, this cost £600,000, and staff time was so we can give a big picture rather than focusing in which will look a negative.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, 100%.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what we can do is we do have the time and the costs for the antisocial behaviour, which we brought to a different council meeting.
Yeah.
So what we'll do, we'll sit down with Alan, the RFO, and we'll work out a way of getting this information out to the wider public. Making sure that we hit all of the different
Yeah.
sectors.
Yeah, I'm very pleased to be extended to things for the front garden competition, yes, because that came out really short notice. I got a post of the week before it finished. You know, but now it's been extended to middle of June. So have we had many entries?
So we're still waiting on quite a few to come in. I think at the present, we've got about six, seven at the max. Yeah, so we're still quite low numbered, but we're pushing out on the comms, Hazel's as well. So we're trying our best to get it out as much as we can, run to the local business, Fettford Forum as well, to finally push it out amongst the businesses. So we'll try and get a real game, drive on a working partnership to really push it forward. Yeah.
Just a quick note before the Anglia Bloom, will that, the back end of 70 will be divided?
Yeah, yeah. So we're again, we're working with Flagship, the owners of the carpet area there, to get it all tidied up. Yeah.
If nobody else has anything, Nick, can I ask a couple of questions? And so I want just to comment, say, please, down to see the probation service and community payback and also the engagement with young members of the community in Bloom.
Yeah, so it's really a positive drive again to be working in a multi-agency approach. Again, we've been fortunate to again, have a close connection with the probation service. So, you know, people who are offended in the local community are seen to be coming back and giving something back to the community and right some of the issues that they cause. Previously, we've had like people with the plants, the planters, they've actually come along and took part in the planting session. So it really highlights, you know, those working partnerships.
And you talked about the issues with the grazings.
Yeah.
I just wanted to express my kind of sympathy really and disappointment at the continued dog attacks. You know, awful for us as a council, but for your staff.
Absolutely. Yeah, it has been very frustrating. You know, as much as we're trying to put the positive vibe out, the reasons why we're grazing and trying to get the public on board to understand, you know, the protection of the area, the triple S I, you know, the beautiful area and open space we're lucky to have. Unfortunately, you know, there is those members that still unfortunately let us down by continuing to, you know, not obliged by the rules and stuff that we're, you know, implements on the land. So unfortunately, like you say, we have had, you know, several instances now where livestock have been injured and staff had to attend to kind of, you know, help the grazing, yeah, in a difficult situation.
Thank you. And I noticed that there are people working down at Nun's Bridges now, so the new footpath is.
Absolutely. So the second phase is now going in. So we've got the new footpath going in, which will go from where the bridge is going to go once planning has all been approved. And that's now leading through into the Ford Meadows. So it does a complete, you know, loop link of the pathway, which makes access so much more better for our public and community.
Excellent news. Thank you. Are you, are we going on to the area administrators' report or?
It's all one report.
All one report.
Want to ask any questions?
Okay. So this is the time to ask any questions on the area administrators' report as well. The market coordinator report.
Yeah, just a little thing there. I was on the more market, it's open now, on Saturday. It was I can't think of any better words to use, but the vibe was really, really positive. It was a joy to be there. It looked like a buzzing vibe in the market. Bit of music playing, which I know, say, that shouldn't really do, but it did add to the atmosphere. I was really pleased to see so many people there, free food offerings, I think it was. So I do feel we get somewhere. There's been a, there's been a bit of salt, but I do feel we're getting somewhere. Is there a little negative about the market that I'd like to comment on? There've been a few little bits and pieces on Facebook suggesting that some of the, or one or more of the stores on the shantons should get publicity in some way that the market does. My view is that, although I have two things to say about it. One is we don't give publicity to the, don't give publicity to Websterlands, but I don't see why those shops should be any different. The other thing I'd say is, um, the the way it's been framed is that they're part of the market. I haven't seen them advertise the market, I haven't seen them promote the market, I haven't seen them retweet anything on Facebook. I haven't seen them doing anything for the market themselves. So I'm not really sure why they think they should do something. Footfall has undoubtedly increased on that market over the last two years. And so my thing would be as tiny as possible. They should be grateful for that. And I hope, I really hope that they made the most of it and we could get the fourth shop home as soon as possible.
Point. Any questions, comments? Good. We've got the allotment officers' report.
But what I would like to say is I would like us to have another involvement.
Yeah, so we're currently working on it, Chris. We know you're keen to get those sort of informal meetings back with the tenants. So it's something that we're working on to get that back in place. We have been working closely with some of the allotment representatives just recently. My concerns are about pest control and bits and pieces with livestock. Yeah, so we're trying our best to assist, but we're well aware of the need for those meetings to come back. So it's definitely on our radar. Absolutely.
Because John, I think it would be give me some grief.
Yeah.
Down a bit more free of time, I was like.
Well, thank you, Chris.
I guess he got today, yeah, absolutely.
And we have, we've issued 37 notices of improvement. Is that fairly typical?
Yeah, it sounds like a lot. There's been a little bit more recently, just to kind of get the plots back to the condition they should be. With cultivations, there's been, you know, quite a few not cultivated, not being kept. So we've had to kind of put the restriction in that, you know, they obviously have to get these allotment plots up to standards before, you know, further action is taken. There has been a lot of allotments taken off the list. So, you know, the waiting list has come right down, which is fantastic. You know, we've been able to allocate a lot of the allotments out, but there's just those few tenants that we've had to work with to get them back to where they need to be.
Okay, great. And then the vast part of votes are volunteer groups, conservation volunteers and the Fettford and Bloom volunteers. Great work by them as usual.
Yeah, absolutely. It was fantastic to have such a, you know, small little community of volunteers that come out and give their time to Fettford. And that's a real credit to, you know, community, what they do, each week by turning out, you know, whether, you know, sunshine or rain, they're there committed to do their little bit for the town, which is fantastic.
Thank you. Very good. Before we do the next one, I just wanted to welcome the gentleman to the meeting. Hello.
I'm in here.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah. What we said before. Be a minister in the last month.
Good. Okay, so we're on to 5425, and you're going to lead this one, so.
No, I think that.
Ah, councillor Wright.
Hi.
Yeah.
I think to be aware that we didn't pass this in 2023 to cite a memorial to the more ventures and a Leighton noting about the Forest Citizens Award and the Forest Campaign. The tree's been there. We do market the service every year, but given it is the 80th anniversary this year, we did do it was more special. As I said, the permission went through this council in 2023. And all they've asked now is to reorientate the two benches so they're facing the river rather than the backs to the road. Otherwise, everything else has previously gone through. Pearson family are looking to finance the installation. The two benches are being cleaned and painted in black to fit in with the rest of the town council furniture. And I'm writing the text as we speak. Hopefully, it's, you know, something that we just want to give them the nod and then they'll go ahead installing the pads for the two benches. I have spoken to Nick in the past about it and, you know, I think they're reasonably comfortable in the people in Heist, who has worked with us. So we know who we're working for.
Yeah. So. I think you're right, so, you know, they're all rep for all sort of local contracts, as I can work with previous, so this all got built. For that round of the contracts, we've worked on this project, so it's brilliant.
But obviously, the legacy will, those two benches and that will revert to the town council in due course, because who knows, that's in terms of FIPo committee or whatever going forward. Obviously, we do need to maintain that. So those two, but they will be in good nick when you take them on.
Harvey? Yeah, I think it's a great idea. It's one of the most precious things, a lot of the things that being there, unless you're being there, you get to do it's in far East, because of more tree and then put the retail, whatever. There've always seemed to be formulations regarding this, et cetera, et cetera. And of course, I've noticed over the last two or three years, I've been, lots of them have strung him to staff and having it's fun to sit, it would be really good. And it's a challenge for what they did. So I'm fully delighted.
That's what I was just going to highlight one thing, and that is, this was discussed an awful long time ago. And then last year, when we had the anniversary, it was mentioned again then. And it just shows you how quickly these things come around again. If we don't act very quickly and agree, then we will be beyond it and miss the opportunity. And quite rightly, as Chris says, they're not going to be around forever. So now it's time to do it. And it's a great opportunity because a lot of the work's been done for us.
Very good. So I think everybody's in agreement. Is that right? And any comments on the citing of the memorial benches or the information plaque? Okay. Happy with the proposal as it stands. Okay, we need a proposal.
On that diagram, sorry, on that diagram, it said that focus places the road and you've asked for the place in the river rather than the road.
Previously, the back was to the road. So you had the tree, which now you're going.
Dixon hasn't. But yeah, the diagram does have with the.
So you've got the back to the road.
No, the road's on the right hand side. So the banks, you look.
Oh, yeah, I thought that was a river, sorry.
It looks like the river. I agree.
Technical drawing. Shows the street North Park Road, I love it.
Okay, can I have a proposal, please? Councillor Wright and a second there. Councillor Harvey, all in favour? Very good. Progress on, 5525, progress on actions from previous meetings. Town clerk.
As you can see, one of the things we've been doing is every time you make a resolution, we then add it to our jobs to be completed, our action spreadsheet as we follow. This one is significantly gone down. Congratulations, Nick, for all the work we've been doing. As you can see, it fits on the one page now. Previously, it went over four. So it just highlights how much work is being done in the background. This also helps you to understand that when you do make a resolution, it's showing you where we are with that resolution. And when it's completed, it then gets moved off of this spreadsheet and the new ones get pulled. Is there any questions?
I mean, it seems to me like we need to make it longer again.
Or we don't do so much work.
No comments or questions? Very good. Thank you for that. 5625 then is Abbey Garden, new benches and litter bins. The lead is.
So as many of the committee here can recall, we spoke a while back about putting some extra benches in on the Abbey Water Meadows along the footpath leading into the town. And some extra new litter bins. We've been sort of working hard with our district partner council to put this into progress because they own the land. We're now fortunate to have a licence agreement sent across to us that we're happy with. That sort of states that obviously we would be responsible for the upkeep and the maintenance of the benches and the bins. But they would licence permission for the bins and the benches to be granted to go into the locations, which would be, you know, a significant improvement to the Abbey Water Meadows area. It's a beautiful area used by many visitors to the town. So we're looking to propose some installation of benches and bins. The benches will be bought from potentially the street furniture stock budget that we have. But we're fortunate that we do have a stock of bins, litter bins in that was previously bought. So we've got them there ready to be installed. So it's just again, to see if the committee are happy in agreeance to go ahead with the proposal.
From Brian. Thank you. Thank you, Nick. I think it's a great idea. I'm particularly pleased that the benches will be attached, because I've been banging on forever about the benches on the other side of the river that don't have these attached and they are. So I think this is a really good idea and I've been a whole lot of it. My only slight concern would be, I wonder if three is a little bit of overdrive. I think absolutely two would be enough.
Yeah.
So you don't have them at either end, you have them spaced out.
Yeah.
The two across the line there and yeah, it's just like the town, lovely.
Brilliant. Really great. Again, there's a slightly proposed as well on the same agenda item. So again, it's proposed locations for grit bins to be located at several locations. Again, there's going to be no cost to us and council, only the installation of the bins themselves, because we have those in stock. So we're ready to reinstall Norfolk County Council highways, where they'd be responsible for filling them and putting the grit in each winter at the proposed locations. At the moment, we're looking at Cleve Close, Mackenzie Road, Red Castle, Warren Close and Stanton Close that have been proposed at the present time.
Thank you. Councillor Paul.
Just have one question. I think that's a great idea, getting them out. And do we still have volunteers who do this now and stuff?
There was a big volunteer network that was set up previously with Norfolk County Council and unfortunately has diminished. Yeah, we are currently working with the highways officer to see if we can get again tier networks reset up. You know, originally there was tools and stuff provided. County haven't got any recollection of where those tools are at present. So we are working.
I'm one of them.
Okay.
I've got some of them in my garage.
Okay.
I won't really want them anymore. But, but I always felt like I was the only person that I knew who did it and I wonder who the rest of the network was. So that's why I asked.
Something that we're definitely trying to work with county on ahead of this winter.
But you need us, no show off. Got some.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thanks.
The other reason, obviously, we went for the design in the benches that you can see on the agenda item is that they have no backs. So it's just for the term antisocial behaviour, for sleeping on the benches.
Okay.
And the police will kind of make full support of that as well for that particular for it to be that we don't put through. So yeah, we're happy to go as long as the committee are happy to approve. And we can work with Breckland to get those installed and put in.
Councillor Wright. Yeah, a couple of things. One is in terms of the emptying of things, we did have this issue in the past where Breckland wouldn't do any more emptying until we actually got rid of it. Are they happy to empty these?
They are, yeah. So we've been working again closely with their team to gain, you know, stress to the district level. They have an obligation, you know, we do install the benches and bins. But again, there's a partnership work that needs to take place. And that is their responsibility for the waste collections at that level at the present time. And so they're well aware and on board that any bins that are going in the moment will be emptied, yeah.
And the other thing is obviously the benches themselves, presumably it's on the new footpath where we go across the meadows. Can I just ask, they set back a little from that path because of the park runners going through.
They lost anyone, yeah.
Not with the sheaves that we're now running through.
Very good. So I think we'll take.
So can I offer an amendment to that, that we go to instead of?
Yep. So I think we'll have to vote on that. So we've got three recommendations. So the initial recommendation was to install three benches at Abbey Water Meadows, cost £2,264. I'm opposing instead of. Councillor Land is proposing.
Instead of the three, we added two.
The cost of £1,376.
Yeah.
The cost would be £1,376, plus £200 delivery. There's no change in the cost of delivery, whether they do two or three.
So are we voting on the two?
Yes. You want to change the resolution and vote on Councillor Land's proposal.
If everybody's agree.
So do, do, what you need to do is Councillor Land will propose it, see if everyone wants to go to it. And if they don't, then we go back to the other one.
Okay. Proposal. Thank you, Councillor Land.
Just ask a question for clarification. You'd say that it was regardless of being two or three, Breckland will be taking care of the regular emptying and, and the setting up of the bins itself is taken care of. The £200 are fixed, whether it's two or three. The delivery is two of that each.
We're talking about.
It could make a difference whether it's two or three, it's just a matter of preference then.
Councillor Breto, we're talking initially about the benches, which whether installing two or three benches and then later we'll come to the bins, which always have a different range.
So two benches and you haven't said on the bins yet, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favour? Great. Two benches it is. Brilliant. Your counsel. Next, we need to agree the town clerk signing the licence on behalf of the town council. This is with Breckland Council, is that right? Can I have a proposal? Councillor Harvey and a second there. Councillor Peters, all those in favour? Very good. And now the bins. Installation grip bins at five, the five proposed locations. Proposal. The land, second there, Councillor Peters, all in agreement. Very good. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you very much. Thank you, committee.
That's great. Going about. Okay, so the team have been, item 5725. Somebody's been working hard at revising the market rules and regulations. Nick, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, absolutely. So previously, our market rules and regulations have been a little bit sort of very limited, not very sort of clear. So my colleague. So my colleague and admin support Kerry, our director administrator, has been kind of working hard to kind of get us into a structured approach. We have a full set out, set of rules and regulations for our markets and traders. And it makes it clear for anybody who's coming as a new trader, aside to our regular traders who already know kind of our background and the rules and regulations that we have already in place previously. It just clearly sets everything out. It tells everybody the times, the payments for regular traders, additional charges for any additional items that they require. It talks about the insurance, the liabilities, the hours of operation that we require and the conduct again that we require from our traders and they remain, you know, professional. Also, there's bits about health and safety, about loading, risk assessments, fire. Food traders, again, there's a lot of things covering about the background of food, hygiene. So it's very extensive. It's really pulled together nicely now with the development of the market, having a proper strategic plan of rules and regulations for our traders and for our, you know, really successful Saturday market now, which is fantastic. And, you know, we're just positive that this is going to, you know, go forward now, hopefully on Tuesday. And this will just support every single new trader that comes on board alongside our regular existing traders.
Thank you, Nick. We note the requirement for written agreement with the marketing manager before any music can be played, Council of Land.
Probably, but thanks, thanks Nick. It's pretty impressive part of your work, isn't it? And I went through it and I have to say that very much in favour as a document in its entirety. Just one thing I would say, I'll go back to just over two years ago when we first appointed the market looked at a point in the market called a revamp in the market. One of the things we spoke about at the time was getting market traders on board, which I think largely we have to be. That being in place, I wonder if it would be a good idea instead of voting on this today, we defer it until the next meeting so that it can be shown to market traders as a consultation, which doesn't mean they have it in sight, it just means they have insulted.
Yeah.
To keep them on board because I think that does play a role for the town.
Absolutely. I think you're right, Harry. You know, the last thing you want to do is just, you know, chuck an extensive amount of rules and regulations in front of our, you know, existing traders and the ones that are coming to us, you know, and cause an upset. So I think, you know, consultation would be a good suggestion, absolutely. If the committee are happy approval of that.
Okay, if everyone's in agreement.
Yeah, so we'll postpone the, our proposal to defer it till next meeting, consultation.
Can I just point out that the next meeting is not till September, so you'll be using your old market rules and regulations that aren't fit for both?
Yeah.
In the meantime.
Yeah.
Everyone, is everyone in? We've got some questions. Councillor Peters, go on.
I'm just mindful, if it is September when we're running with the old ones, as we say, are not fit for purpose, can we not adopt it subject to consultation?
That's my idea.
I'm going to say the same words. If the person.
Yeah, I mean, if there's anything adverse comes back from consultation, which I really don't feel there is.
I doubt it really.
Yeah.
But if anything comes back, we can look at it then, but if nothing comes back, then we adopt it as.
Your proposal.
All right, do you want to propose that?
Yeah, so we'll vote on that. We're adopting it subject to consultation. Can I have a proposal? Councillor Peters and a second there, councillor Beretta. Thank you. All in favour? All in favour. Very good. Okay, fifty eight twenty five is the new cemetery memorial trees rules and regulations. Good to see this coming to the committee. Nick, are you going to introduce this one to you?
Okay, so as you know, from the previous meeting, we were sort of really pushing to get this memorial tree and moving, the options moving forward for our London Road Cemetery. Again, my colleague Kerry, he's been really working hard on the cemetery side recently to get all this put together. So we've now adopted, obviously got a memorial tree policy for the committee to adopt and also memorial tree application form. This all sort of formed part of the process of anybody, you know, applying for one of our memorial trees at the cemetery on the new side, the flower and cherries. The team have got to do a little bit of work just around the bases to get them up to spec before we start offering them out. But we've really sort of set the precedent now on the information admin side. And so everything is kind of set out nicely. And just explain the basic again rules and regulations surrounding anybody that wants to apply for a memorial tree within our cemetery.
Thank you, Nick. Any comments on this, councillor Land?
Yeah, perfect. Same again. A good ball of wood. Thank you.
Councillor McDonald.
No, really good. The one thing I've read through this three times and it might be my bad eyes, I couldn't see where the time period was.
A hundred years, ten years?
It was ten years.
It's ten years we went for, yeah.
My bad eyes.
Three point one eleven.
All right, so I was looking for it on the application form because I wanted to see it on there. Okay, that's fine.
Would you like us to add it to the application form?
Knowing this from the past, this is very contentious and people, you know, once they've got they think that they have ownership of it. And it must be really clear on even on the form they do, let alone to think, I missed it and I know I've got this from the good eyes, but.
Do is we can adopt it subject to the amendment of adding the ten years to the application form.
Could we not provide a kind of word count on the inscription or anything, without any guidance on?
No. There will be, there will be only so much words that will fit on the plaque.
In the size.
The size. I think.
Okay. Okay.
I think you're right, Matt. It sort of gives that bit of clarity, doesn't it? If you have it on the application form, it's there. When you're putting the application in, you know, that is subject to ten years rather than having to find that information for on the policy, the rules and regs. So I think that's a good suggestion.
Thank you.
It does feel, quick as it is, it does feel a bit like small premiums, doesn't it?
Yep.
Can I just add as well to the details of the inscription at the memorial plaque, Nick? We need, we need a section in there saying that that needs to be agreed by the town clerk.
Yep.
Because otherwise we might get something inappropriate put on there.
Yeah.
Is there anything else that we can add that you think would make this form better?
Okay, so we are approving the
policy and adopting this subject to the changes we've discussed. Yeah.
Great. Can I have a proposal? One more?
I'm happy to propose. There's one other question, which, and you've covered part of it in being the arbiter of what's, what's in good taste. The plaques themselves, are they provided by council and they're all of the same?
So they're all going to be the same.
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, you. Councillor McDonald proposes, a second there please. Councillor Beretta, all in favour? Thank you very much. On to fifty nine twenty five, so this is a consequence of the success of the market, I guess. It's a good, a good problem to have. So Nick, are you introducing this stuff?
So again, we're really, you know, pleased, like Council of Land to, you know, really sort of push out there that our Saturday market is really thriving now. You know, it's a real sort of push on stores coming on board to come and trade here in Fethford. Our market coordinator now is finding on Saturday, it's struggling for capacity of space to house everybody that wants to come along. And we're still getting some more inquiries from traders that want to come and, you know, look at Fethford as a trading place. And so one of the things that we've been looking at, I don't know if many of the councillors here, previously remember, we used to have what we called the lower market. So we used to have a lower market many years ago, which needs to incorporate some of the area around the Carnegie open space. Again, the space is very little underused and utilised. So we're being looking at some potential ideas again that we could propose to yourselves as a committee to try and help with capacity for, you know, encouraging more stalls to come along and to house the ones that are interested that we're sort of struggling to cater for. So particularly the area around the Carnegie was going to be relocated as the lower market. And then potentially we was looking at maybe some particular sort of food stalls, you know, we seem to get a lot of food stalls now that are kind of coming, showing some good interest. But maybe locating some of those into the King's Square area. Again, an area very little underused, it has facilities including water and electric there and that we can really utilise and make a good nice vibrant space to include that, you know, town centre field alongside the support and of the local businesses already there to give them footfall from the stores that would be, you know, trading. So there's some real sort of ideas there, just again for the committee to consider and just to help, you know, our market coordinator Julian in sort of, you know, catering for the, the interests that we're getting at the moment for the market.
Thank you, Nick. Any comments, councillor Peters?
Just. If we incorporate things at the King's Square, I'm assuming you mean where shops are.
Yes.
There's issues sometimes with the trader, town traders that might, they don't want their shops blocked, especially on a busy day, which is going to be. So we'd have to bear that in mind. And there was also a food trader already operates down there and I think we have to bear that in mind as well. If we're going to be putting your three more food vendors down there, that may have a detrimental effect on, on, on how they perceive by longstanding traders down there.
Councillor Land.
Yeah, I agree. I'd go a bit further. I think splitting the market up geographically in that manner, my, you know, if, if it comes to it, that we use all the capacity around Carnegie, then, you know, we're going to have to look at something. I think one step at a time and maybe we just look at the space over the way there first. My concern would be, as well as councillor, he was expressed, would be they'd get two markets and they're sort of cutting each other's throat a bit and then they move intro from one place to another. I think we need a sort of integrated market. So I would suggest that we just look at the space around here first before potentially looking at all this space everywhere else.
Councillor Beretta.
Yeah, I agree in the fact that adding more traders wanting to take part is always a good thing, that is a good sign. I think we mentioned this before when we discussed markets, that should we have like several food vendors and have like the ones that are focusing products, say that we have two vendors doing fish and chips, for example, that we were going to prioritise and try to make it so there was a variety. And when we set the triggers in to make sure that there's a variety rather than duplicating before. You know, if we have to, if we kind of accommodate them all and that that will be a good problem to have, that we at least accept them by, by diversity of products, with a good offering rather than duplicating by, just say two of them come ahead of a burger. You know, it's no point then into fish and chips if you can have one of each. But I think this is something that's been discussed before and perhaps we can look at. Thank you.
Councillor Land. That's what McDonald has a spot given this issue to go first.
Thank you.
I think it's a great idea having it close in and it adds to this market. But what we have discussed is that this market, which has grown, has seen greater footfall. And I think that that will only benefit anything further down the town. In a previous topic, we talked about doing consultation. So if we were to do a market closer in and then consult with those shop owners and explain that it's increased the footfall at this end of town, the other traders have benefited and we're looking to do it in your area soon. Bring them along with us before we start it. I think there's, there's a way of developing it where it will be a positive thing rather than anything negative. I personally don't think it would be too negative because, you know, I don't think Mercoslot's or, or Boots Opticians are going to be too upset about, you know, having been in there. So I think if we pre-do it with a bit of a PR piece, I think it'd be a great news. And grow, grow steadily.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Harvey?
Yeah, I'm not, I have to be sorry, I think it's not a great idea to split the market up down the King's Square. We decided that the King's Square would be a good place for music and stuff to go. If we could have put food stalls on there and then stopping music things from going on, et cetera, et cetera. I'd rather have a piece of music in town but not a burger and stuff on there.
Councillor Peters?
Just one, I think it's great that we are attracting a lot more. But we could go overkill if we just flood it with food vendors. Because at the moment we've got like sometimes we've got three food vendors on, on the market. And I'm, I'm thinking it's plenty because if you've got half a dozen, there's only so much food that's going to be eaten and that then takes their attraction of being here away. So it's less likely they're going to stay if, if we sort of sign the ad stuff, you know, burgers there, you know, an Indian, you know, the pizzas. I think we've got some quite good food vendors in there and we don't want to kill them off.
I think what Nick's idea was is that we use Wells Street first.
Yeah.
And then if we get overrun there, then we move to King's Square. But I think the idea of doing a consultation and then coming back to council in September with the consultation, you can then make a resolution on that. So I would suggest that the resolution gets changed to that we do a consultation on number two with regards to King's Square. And then we bring that section back to council in September with the consultation findings. But we agree to the other ones at this time.
Councillor Land.
Yeah, this was a hot food store. Going back again historically, two, two years ago, when we started this process, it was, I did quite good research about markets and how you promote the worst it, the biggest thing, the biggest thing by far was getting a hot food offering. And we've done pretty well with that, as you say. On Saturday, there were three stores selling hot food. Two of whom did well, one not so well. I think there was a bit of a, a dilving process there. Some of them thrive, some of them tend not to. And coming back to Carl's point, I mean, it's pretty clear in those regulations that you don't duplicate any offerings anyway from any of the stalls and, you know, it's a case of first it gets the dish, you know. So I wouldn't be worried about too many food stalls yet. There will, there will be an equilibrium, I think.
Okay, so we'll firstly, so vote on the reintroduction space around the Carnegie, the Wells Street side for market trading. Have a proposal for that one. Councillor McDonald and a second there, councillor Peters, all in favour? Great, thank you. Did you abstain from that one, councillor Land?
No, both of us.
Very good.
Apologies.
And the job for you, Nick, is to do the consultation with shops in the King's Square and bring it back to the council and
Absolutely.
With a new resolution.
I wonder if a consultation about King's Square would include the use of music. You know, Chris has mentioned it, it's got a stage there. And I disagree with you about putting food down there because it's never stopped any music, we don't have any. But if we did have some, it would really add to it. And, and as you said earlier, you know, that little bit of music in the background really added to the market, so yeah, that'd be good.
Courtesy of council would.
Yeah.
Finally, yes, we note the positive growth of the Saturday market and congratulations to everybody involved in that. It's really excellent work.
Wouldn't it be a shame?
Thank you. Sixty twenty five is the use of Ford Meadow by the Brex. Sixty twenty five is the use of Ford Meadow by the Brex Fennage and River Group?
Yeah, so recently received the request for an open water wild swim event to take place. Previously, the BFER worked closely with the organisation to offer this event help to public, which is quite a popular thing now. Wild swimming. So it's a one day event to be held on the thirteenth of August. And basically they're asking for permission to use Ford Meadow for access into the river. Close just up from the Fish Pass. They will obviously, they've submitted all their risk assessments, insurance documentation. As well as filling out a open space application form. So submitted everything that they need to for the event. Obviously, there will be no costs to the town council associated with the event. And so again, it's just to see if the committee are happy to approve for this local community events to take place.
Very good, thank you. All in favour? I need somebody to propose.
I'm a bit ago and then you could paddle my second.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Look forward to seeing him in the river. Okay. So before we move on to sixty one twenty five, is that it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can stop the recording if you just.
Okay, so. Sixty one twenty five is the exclusion of press and public. Don't need to read this bit out. Should to consider resolving pursuant to the Public Forty's Admission to Meetings Act nineteen sixty, press and public be excluded. Or any remaining items of business on the grounds of publicity would be prejudiced to the public in. By reason of the confidential nature of the business to be discussed. Where the rotor exclude the press and public. All agreed?
I agree.
Fine.